... If I would just ask you, the guy who's making decisions with your mom to make the set of you, and more if we just ask for your blessing on all of Catoosa County, we ask for your blessing on all of the server, and more if we just want to ask that you watch holders, the highest in counting the United States of America, guy who blessed the state of Georgia, and of course, Catoosa County, your name, Kevin Lee Gray.
Salute. Let me give you the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Cutler?
Here.
Karen Henry?
Here.
Mr. Winters?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
This time, I think we have a couple items to hand in the move to the agenda, or to add a proposed approval of the DVH/BD applied contract with 19 DNA contract, and the proposed approval of the Baywater contract with Consulting Group for GRT, and take off executive sessions. Is there anything else?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
This time, does everyone have a chance to look at the amendments from September 18th meeting, and if so, do I have a motion to approve the amendments as it is?
Looking to approve.
Second, all in favor of approving the September 18th amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any appearances this week?
My name is Philms Williams, and I live in Catoosa County, and at the last meeting, I know y'all voted on an architect for the fire department, but don't get her phone running out and say, "Philms don't like firemen," because she does. But I have a problem, I know this is not a question answering session, but when y'all voted on the architect, why don't you all tell us where you're going to put the fire department, how much it's going to cost, has anybody looked at any of that? Because for an architect to draw something, he got to have a place to put it, and we'd just like to know how it's going to be paid for, where it's going to be, and what all it's going to entail, because I think those are important issues for the public. And I'd just like for you, when you do stuff like that, to tell us the whole story, and then we won't have to get up here and make a statement, because this is not a question answering session. Thank you.
Okay, George Battersby, District 4, and I'm still waiting for the commission to take some action on the county clinic, huge waste of money that's happening every month. I pass there three or four times a day, never see anybody in there except the two employees that we're paying for. It's wasting approximately 400 grand a year, and you all continue to do absolutely nothing about it. There's nothing in Catoosa County for seniors with Alzheimer's dementia in the line of an adult daycare center, medical model. That $400,000 would go a long way towards something like that. There's one in North Withfield County that is excellent, and you all, it wouldn't hurt to go down there and look at it if you're interested. And they take people from Catoosa County, but sadly, Catoosa County will not transport people down there, because it's against their rules, as usual. So that is not going to go away with me. You can negotiate with a walk-in clinic. There's one in Ringgold that's open 40 to 50 hours a week. Your all's clinic is open 20 hours a week, and it's a disgrace, a waste of money, and I'm not going to get over it until something is done. And you can get with CVS or Walgreens and get a discount for flu shots, because I think that's mainly what it's being used for. But to pay half a million dollars a year of hard money is a disgrace, and the voters will remember that down the road. Thank you.
Any questions? This time, we'll move into administrative physical managers. Neil O'Grave.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Board of Assessors is requesting approval of the annual contract with Flanna Corporation. It's the parent company for the Q public, our website posting our public information, and this will go through September 30th, 2019. The $7,750 fee is included in our 2019 budget, and the invoice stated 9-1-2-1-18 was approved by the Board of Assessors in their September 18th meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Sorry. We have some questions. Sorry, that's an excellent site.
It is. Some of the best money we spend.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. The Board of Assessors again requests approval of contract services for the 2019 tax year with GMAS, that's Georgia Massgie Price Solutions and Services. This is a maintenance contract to assist the board in office with land and improve evaluations and schedules for the 2019 tax year. GMAS has been providing support to the board since 2014. The $6,800 contract service agreement fee is included in our 2019 budget, and was approved by the Board of Assessors again in their September meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Sorry. We have some questions. Sorry, that's an excellent site.
It is. Some of the best money we spend.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. The Board of Assessors again requests approval of contract services for the 2019 tax year with GMAS, that's Georgia Massgie Price Solutions and Services. This is a maintenance contract to assist the board in office with land and improve evaluations and schedules for the 2019 tax year. GMAS has been providing support to the board since 2014. The $6,800 contract service agreement fee is included in our 2019 budget, and was approved by the Board of Assessors again in their September meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Sorry. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. The Board of Assessors again requests approval of contract services for the 2019 tax year with GMAS, that's Georgia Massgie Price Solutions and Services. This is a maintenance contract to assist the board in office with land and improve evaluations and schedules for the 2019 tax year. GMAS has been providing support to the board since 2014. The $6,800 contract service agreement fee is included in our 2019 budget, and was approved by the Board of Assessors again in their September meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Sorry. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work and your diligence. Chief Kim?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for coming tonight asking for approval for a change order to Chasler Incorporated for the Station 3 rebuild, and for the certificate of substantial completion for the project. The original contract was approved by the Commissioners for 7/22/206, and the completion file, which I'm happy to say came in at 7:18:925. So the approval request to accept the contract amount decreased by 3,000 to 281, so we were real tempted to be out of our budget. We did do some changes. They gave us a credit for the fire that they used, 7,1600. We swapped some doors for payable doors. So we did some things that we thought was just as good, and saved some money, so we were pleased to come under budget of the 3,200.
Do I have a motion to accept you did that?
So moved.
Sorry. Questions for the chief?
It's good to see that the station back on, the chief, and you guys, something really happy, and a bit busy. A lot of calls. Yes, well, it's always been a busy station, but things like, it's been active, running three or four days at least, and they're really pleased with it, and I think it's a nice addition to the community.
I'm glad you all there. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, chief. Like you keep that pad up, or I could be none of your general attention.
Yes, sir.
Just wait a minute.
What are you going to do? Just like previous years, we have the new GRT, Generation RX grant project for the upcoming prescription drug abuse collection mission used between 12 and 25-year-olds. We are in our fourth year of our five-year grant period, and we're just seeking approval for if you all can continue as our physical agent. The grant amount is the exact same as it has been, 195,755, and you can go through and see exactly how that money is being after the pageant, I believe, pay something, that we just handled all that.
Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Do we have some questions?
The second is the contract with Megan Smith, Smith Consulting Group and Services. We are the state within our grant, and our contract states that we have to have an evaluator to evaluate any kind of outcomes we've done throughout the county, with any strategies that we're doing. With that, the state's chosen Smith Consulting Group, and her payment is actually built in within the grant, and just, it has many variables that's completely reversible, just off 30 grand, so we just get approval with that as well. That's all we're saying.
Do I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we want to move into reports and official views here from USDA.
I want to thank y'all for an opportunity to come tonight and talk to you about rabies and what USDA Wildlife Services is doing here in Northwest Georgia, and really down the eastern seaboard, but, and just kind of give you an update on that. I appreciate Ms. Kane setting this up, Ms. Horton, which has been a phenomenal cooperator of our animal shelter, helping us to get samples to test for rabies. So I've got about 15 or 16 slides here, I believe, that I'll go through, and welcome any questions, dear or after my presentation, so. I think we're trying to get a remote working on that. I'll go ahead. I work for a small division within USDA called Wildlife Services. We are part of US Department of Agriculture, and we do typically animal damage work, animal damage issues. We do not have any regulatory authority, which works out good for us, because a lot of times we're going on private property, and having regulatory authority, a lot of times, causes problems with landowners. Our mission is to be leaders. Is provide federal leadership in managing human wildlife conflicts. Our program, the different research centers, focus on human health and safety, agriculture, property, and natural resources. The agency's organized their regional and state offices. The National Wildlife Research Center is our research arm, and it's field stations just throughout the United States, and then through our national programs, such as the National Rescue Management Program, which is kind of what we're talking to you about tonight. What we do as an agency, we provide technical assistance, that assistance is free to anybody. Basically, we'll get contacts from homeowners, landowners, on up to Department of Defense, and that contact us, and we've got this problem, what can we do? We've got this problem, this wildlife species, what can we do? A lot of times, we can answer the question over the phone, sometimes we'll go out for a site visit. That's a free service that we provide, being a federal agency. We also do direct assistance, which, unlike most federal agencies, we're not a fully-funded agency, so we do charge for that. But, as I mentioned, DMD is one of our cooperators. We do a lot of work on Air Force bases. We've got two people here in the state that work for us that are fully funded through Department of Defense, working at Air Force bases, doing a lot of base work, which is bird aircraft had a strike hazard. So, but we also work with individual landowners, homeowners, corporations, companies, counties. We do a lot of work with different counties. Then, disease monitoring management, which is obviously what I'm part of, or at least is a portion of my job. And then research and development, part of our research arm is, I mentioned, with NWRC, the National Wildlife Research Center, and we assist them with lots of taking samples throughout the country, and various other aspects of the work that they do, and then they've got the number crunchers to tell us what all that means. But then we have certain methods for resolving human wildlife conflict, including behavior modification, exclusion, population management, habitat operation, and then education also falls into that. All right, kind of getting to the crux of the matter tonight. This was in 2015, the red up here, each dot there, which is kind of lensing together at this size, but each one of those dots was a raptor-raccoon. That was in 2015, this is the papers come from about 2017. But as you can see, there's kind of a distinct line where this cuts off, and what we're looking at specifically is the raccoon strain of rabies. Now, rabies is not endemic to the United States, it's been here for, you know, three or four centuries now, rather from Europe, but the raccoon strain is on the east coast. There are some raccoon detected positive out here, but that's a different strain of rabies. So what I'm dealing with tonight is just this area here. If you pay attention to that line in the next slide, that's bottom line, we want to keep the red dots away, but that line would be right along here. Our research arm, some of our field folks, and it was actually, I guess you'd say, a multi-agency project got together and looked at the impact of rabies, raccoon rabies that is moving westward now. Probably over the past two or three decades, maybe longer than that, it's been moving westward from the coast, about 30 to 35 miles a year. So they determined, based on this movement, movement pattern, and that around 2035, it would be over here into Missouri, Arkansas, almost into Oklahoma. What this would have done, what this would do would call a $1.1 billion negative impact on our economy, approximately 55 million a year, and look greater than 20 million livestock at risk. So what we wanted to do, our initial goal was to stop that western movement. This started back in, we actually started working with Canada, they had a program up there before us, and we started working within some of the boundary states up there. They kind of eradicated rabies in certain areas, and they were baiting along the line to keep those rabies out of Canada. So that's kind of, that's kind of the spark that started this fire with us, but there was always rabies movement, we wanted to keep it from moving westward, and we basically done that. We basically held the line there. We started here in Georgia in 2003, started up in, I think it was Miami, some of the northeastern states, several years prior to that. As I mentioned, the spot that had the map that had the red dots, this is kind of the line, these black areas here, that's where we baited. We do that once a year, starts up in the northeast, moves down, will actually be starting here about the middle of the month, in this, in this area right there here. They actually probably started today, up here in Virginia, Tennessee area. 2017, we dropped almost 10 and a half billion baits, over 90% of those, 9.3 billion, were some raccoon, rabies variant, the rest of them were out here in Texas, where they're working with the keeping rabies that they pushed out, and coming back up from Mexico. Covered 161 square kilometers, and includes 17 states. It's quite the undertaking, as you might imagine, but we've got some tremendous people that's in our program that really, really make it work smoothly. We call it ORB, the Orabes Vaccine Bait Drop, and since 1995, which it began, we've dropped over 187 million baits, with 2.5 billion of those being distributed in Georgia since 2003. Previously, up until 2016, we used fixed wing and hand baiting. Fortunately, in the last couple of years, we've gone to rotary wing, where we were doing the hand baiting, that's in the more urban areas. The fixed wing, we use King Air, they've got specially designed equipment in them that we use to drop the baits. These picture baits here are what we are using now. We hand baited and initially used these baits. They've got the exact same vaccine in them, but I think the cost is a little less for these, when we're hand baiting, which is, we're basically doing the thing we've got trouble for when we're kids, we're chucking stuff out of car windows. But, so, we had a lot of penitentiary over the time we got done, because we were, between us and the Health Departments and some of the other agencies that were helping us, we were throwing out 30 something thousand baits in about a week's time. So that was, that was definitely the undertaking that took a lot of time to coordinate. But now, since we've gone to the helicopter baiting in the urban areas, it's a lot more efficient, we can hit areas up off the roads where the raccoon habitat are, and really focus on the areas that we need to get, as opposed to just along the roadside. The flight, the big portion of it is the fixed wing, we use, I mentioned, King Airs. The flight lines are typically spaced 1,500 feet apart, and we're flying at about 500 feet above ground level, and usually it's 75 baits per kilometer. We have some contingencies where we double that. Actually, what we do is we decrease it to 750 feet flight lines instead of 1,500, so we're throwing out the same amount of baits per line that we would, but we're doubling the line, so we go from 75 to 150 baits per square kilometer. The red dots here are positives. This was 2015 to 2018. As you can see, most of them are outside the line, I obviously don't have all the positives in Georgia, but the ones up here close to the line are, you know, they're the most important ones for our purposes, anyway. 2018, we had a couple up here in Hamilton County, it only shows one, it shows one, or, yeah, there's actually two blues up there. They hadn't had any in Hamilton County for about two years, so that kind of, that kind of kicked us into high gears. As I mentioned, we'll be starting the helicopter baiting, that'll be out of Chattanooga, and actually, I think the bay started today, and so we're going to do double density, we're actually going to do the 150 per square kilometer there, to try to get ahead of anything that, any movement that might be occurring there. But, so that's what that green is, there's the contingency for that. And then, they had some that actually did a breach up here, that they're actually doing four times the normal rate. So when we get on west of the line, then we really kick it in. I think they actually did that back in the spring, if I'm not mistaken, they had some positives west of the line, so they did an additional drop up there. Getting a little closer to home, the, this area here is what we call the Georgia Altitude Tennessee, or Gap for short, and that's what we'll be starting about the middle of the month. It'll actually be, we'll actually be working out of Dalton Airport. There's the two positives we had in Hamilton County, and we had this one, and there's actually another one more recently that's not on here from Burry County, just kind of up the line. The ones south of the Georgia line, they aren't too bad, because as you can see, we've kind of got, we've kind of got a pretty big buffer around there, and you're going to have those occasionally kind of creep up into the bait zone. But what, what I do want you to notice is that here in Catoosa, Walker Day, and really Chautauqua, and I've got a slide just a little later on that show, we hadn't had any in the last couple of years, I think there was one maybe in 2017 in Chautauqua, but it was an area that was, that was east of our line, so it wasn't actually in the bait zone. We had, we had some positives up here, a couple, three years ago, and so we did back the lineup, we just increased the line, and some of that was double density baiting. 2016, we removed the green, and then, or 2017, we removed the green, this year, we removed the blue, so we hadn't had any positives there, we kind of got ahead of that and cut that off, so we're really pleased with that, a lot of baits out there. Actually, they're taking those baits and they're doing some work down in the Birmingham area. So, again, this is the gap, what I want to show you here, you can see there's some yellow, and then there's orange in here, and those oranges are urban areas, that's where we'll do the helicopter baiting that started today, and we'll go through the next couple of days. I'm not sure you can see it, I kind of want to pull it in, but you might see that the axle, the grid lines there that will fly, and of course, all this is GPS, so they just, they push it in, the pilots keep it on the line, and it works really well. To do this area here, we'll spend about two days helicopters baiting, and then if we have good weather, we'll be done in about a week with the rest of that baiting, so it's a pretty efficient program. And this just kind of shows you the extent of what a lot of our biologists, including myself, do. This is from 2005, and this is the enhanced rabies surveillance samples, this is throughout the eastern, the east coast, and as you can see, we started out around 3,800, and it's maintained up until the last couple of years, around 10,000. That's the number of animals that have been tested for rabies over and above any Health Department. Now, we don't deal with anything that's been exposure that goes to the Health Department like normal, because of the, because of the health issues, and the need to get that done really fast, and see if there's any post-exposure prophylaxis needed. But, so this, this is where people, Ms. Horton comes in, in the play, because she's been very good about getting assassins from Catoosa County, out there at the animal shelter, and ideally, I'd like to bump that up, working with some of the, in the Sheriff's Department or local police departments, and see if we can work something out. I gladly provide freezers for that, but be willing to talk to anyone that might be interested in that, we've got them in freezer. I believe the way y'all do it, if somebody catches a nuisance animal, they can bring it out there, and y'all take care of that and put it in the freezer, is that right? So, and again, as I mentioned, we're targeting, ideally, we're targeting sick acting and animals that are found dead. We also do road kills. I spend a good bit of my time driving up and down the road, looking for road kills fresh enough that I can, that I can take a sample off of them. So see anybody inside a road, pick up truck, you know, throwing a pin or something back to truck, it might be me. But what we're trying to do is find any possible positives, but the negatives tell us just as much. If I'm picking up a number of animals in the county and all of them are negative, then that's a good sign that, you know, we've kind of got rabies on the run, or that we've got it out of the county itself. So we've got some drop-off freezers, as I mentioned, there's one in most counties that we're working with. But, um, so this, this is where people, Ms. Orton comes in, uh, into play, because she's been very good, I've got assassins from Catoosa County out there at the animal, uh, animal shelter, and, um, ideally, I, I'd like to, to bump that up, working with some of the, and the sheriff's department or local police departments, and see if we can work something out. I gladly provide freezers for that, but, um, people that talk to anyone that, that might be interested in that, we've got them a freezer. Um, I believe the way y'all do, if somebody catches a nuisance animal, they can bring it out there and, um, y'all take care of that and put it in the freezer, is that right? So, um, and again, as I mentioned, uh, we're targeting, ideally, we're targeting sick, uh, sick acting and, uh, animals that are found dead. We also do road kills. Um, I spend a good bit of my time driving up and down the road, looking for road kills fresh enough that I can, that I can take a sample off of them. So, see anybody inside a road, pick up a truck, you know, throwing a coon or something in the back of the truck, it, it might be negative. Um, but what we're trying to do is find any, any possible positives, but the negatives tell us just as much. If I'm picking up a number of animals in the county and all of them are negative, then that's a good sign that, you know, we've, we've kind of got rabies on the run, or that, that we've got it out of the county itself. Um, so, we've got some drop-off freezers, as I mentioned, there's, there's one in, in most counties that we're, we're working with, um, and, um, trying, part of my reason being here and, and trying to do some other, uh, talks like this, is to, to increase, increase that, increase public knowledge, uh, of what we're doing and how they can help. Uh, what I want to point out here, this is District 111 with the Environmental Health Department here in Georgia, which is, some of you may be familiar with, it's kind of this northwest corner and, um, down in Floyd County and stuff. But the counties that we're dropping in are highlighted, Catoosa, Chautauqua, Day, and Walker. And if you look out, uh, well, if you just, if you really could look across their numbers, uh, since 2006, have been, have been pretty low and non-existent. Um, if you look at these, well, from 2015, there were one a day. Um, I don't have the information on that, I don't know if it was a bad, a bad rabies or a tracking rabies, but, um, 2017, we had one in Chautauqua, but that was actually, as I mentioned earlier, that was east of the line, so you, you expect that. But, um, if you compare, if you compare these numbers here to the rest of these counties, um, you can see that, uh, what we're doing is definitely making an impact in here, you know, Walker County, so some of them have spent four or five years since we've had any positives, and that includes environmental health positives that, that there's been an exposure. Uh, there's a number of them from each, uh, county sending even every year from environmental health to have tested, but, um, with the exception of that, when the county will last three or four years, they're not getting any. So, um, so what we're doing really, really seems to be having an effect in those counties. Um, we don't have any, any drops in any other counties. We do have Winfield in Murray County, Murray is just a small piece. We have, uh, the, the drop in Winfield, we are still picking up some positives there, but, uh, it's right along the line, or kind of east of the line. And then this is just some of our freezers, you can see we're close with some animal control, um, with, uh, Catoosa County being really one of our better cooperators and, and having worked with us such a long time, so really appreciate that, but, um, there's, there's kind of some drop-off sites, if you have a, an animal, um, they've got, they've got freezers that we provided there to, uh, provide them. So, um, no, it's kind of quick, but, um, if anybody got any questions, I'd be glad to, to try to answer them. Um, and, I'm open for questions.
Uh, Mr. D.
Yes.
Do you drop just in rural areas, or do you drop in areas that have residences but are surrounded by woods?
Yes, and that's where the, uh, that's where the helicopter baiting come in. We'll, uh, we'll target those, like I say, historically, since 2003, we were hand-baited up till 2016, and we started with this helicopter baiting in 2016. Um, it dropped about, it dropped us from about thirty thousand baits to about three thousand, and I went back to our folks, I said, "Look, you know, it takes longer to get some of these places than it does to throw out a hundred baits of them." So, um, they agreed that, to let us do, uh, helicopter bait, which, if you look at, if you look at the data on the map, it's so much more efficient, because it's just going on, basically in divisions and stuff, we can get behind these houses and on the edge of some of these subdivision, and drop it into a coon habitat where you've got drains and stuff, where you're, where the coon dog, where it really needs to be. So, that's, that's what we do in, in the urban areas, um, with Chattanooga, Dalton, being, and of course, down here, you know, being part of the Chattanooga, the Chattanooga drop that they did.
One more question.
Yeah.
I don't know what, I haven't come up with a theme, but, uh, if they see it or an animal will it hurt their animals at all if they get the bait?
No, um, the baits, they, they've tested these baits, I think on like twenty or thirty-some large species. If, if a dog eats a number of them, just because of, and, and I think it, it has more to do with the, the, um, these baits, I hate to mention it, they're, they're coated with a fish meal, with a fish meal as an attractant, to get the rattan and, and other wildlife to pick them up. So, sometimes, you know, our pets are attracted to that, and they'll eat them, and if they eat a number of them, they, they might, they might get sick, just like if we ate a bunch of stuff we weren't used to, we might get sick. But as far as the vaccine itself, it's, it's not going to hurt the animals, they, they did extensive testing. These baits actually are made by a company out of Athens, who are Mariel, which they're, uh, animal pharmaceutical, is their, is their main thing. If you've got a pet, more likely it's had some of their pharmaceuticals go through at some point. But, uh, but yeah, indeed, that's a good question. It's, um, it's safe, you know, we recommend if, if a homeowner finds it in their yard or something, they may pick it up with a bag, toss it over there. It's typically not a problem. If the, if the bait's busted, um, some people may have a rash if they, if they get it on their skin, um, you need to pick it up with, you know, a plastic bag, a plastic glove, and either toss it off today in the woods, or even throw it in the trash, you know, if you don't, if you don't want it out there. Ideally, you throw it in the woods, hopefully, you know, one of the rattans can pick it up and, uh, the, the vaccination will do what it's supposed to do and reduce the prevalence of rabies and variants in the drop.
And one other question, if, if someone has an animal, they're, are picked one up and took them to Canada, what information does that need to give them?
Very good question. I mean, the location, it can either be, uh, you know, nowadays, some people have access to, to GPS coordinates, but an address, uh, the closest road intersection, anything like that, just so I can get a fairly specific location. Um, if, if that location's not possible, at least we know it's in Catoosa County, but for our purposes, especially as you saw, you know, we know it's, if it's right on the line, well, that's not a big concern, if it's right on the state line. So, uh, and then ideally, I might have a phone number, because I'll, I'll try to follow up once I, if animals in the condition, what I'll do is take a, uh, take a piece of the brain stem, and then we've got, it's basically a field test, uh, Environmental Health Department in Floyd County providing the lab space. I'll go down there about once a month, the animals that I've picked up, and I'll do a, I'll do a test there. If I get positives, we'll send it off to, uh, to the lab for confirmation that they use kind of the gold standard, which is the fluorescence test, which is the same thing the health department uses. But, um, so we'll, we'll test everything in the field, and then we send off our positives or indeterminants to them, as well as some, um, some negatives, just to check up on us and make sure that, you know, we're, we're running our test right. Um, but, back to the information, location is, is very important to us. Hot phone numbers, I'll call back up to the individual if possible, they'd know if it was, if it comes back, a positive or if it comes back negative. Um, if the animal's found dead, say in their backyard versus road kill, those are actually, even though they're both found dead, it's two different specific things, but this road kill, um, is not as high a priority for us. We want animals that sick act, sick acting are, are found dead, you know, there appears to be no reason that they're dead, but, you know, they're laying there, and, um, obviously, we don't want you physically touched down, we don't have rubber gloves, um, you know, plastic bag or something like that, that you can do it. Uh, if I'm available, I'm on the road a lot, if I'm available, my contact information's up here, I don't, um, actually, that's the wrong number, but, uh, should be two two nine, three two eight, seven two eight zero, but, um, if I'm available, I'll, I'll either pick an animal up, uh, because it's, it's a great help for me, especially here in Catoosa County, we don't, we had ham rabies for a while, but we'll get it more.
What, actually, citizens look for, to see, you know, be careful or not of ham rabies?
Rabies is a neurological disease, um, and so it can manifest itself, but most people think of, of, um, kind of the injury or tragedy from a rabies, where they're just biting everything, but they can also be kind of, um, just look like they're, uh, they're just kind of out of their mind, just wandering around. Um, this temper is another disease that's common up here, and, uh, it, it's also a neurological disease, so they can have similar, uh, similar attributes, but animals kind of wander around, staggered around, uh, that's the, that's the main thing. Obviously, you know, you got an animal fuming in the mouth or something, but typically, uh, you know, you don't, it typically, if it gets to that point, it's probably going to bite somebody or something, if something's around, and, and then that goes to environmental health. So, um, but, but really, something that's just, just kind of wandering around, it, it don't seem like another word to go, and it's, it's not, it's not the one, you know, particular place, um, that's, that's what, that's what we're looking for as far as a, a sick active animal. Now, I want to go ahead and say, I'm sure most everybody here probably knows this, an animal such as a raccoon being out in daylight does not necessarily constitute a sick animal. Uh, we can call all the, hey, I saw this raccoon, it's out here in daylight, it's got to have rabies. Um, raccoons will move out here today for different reasons, they may have been stirred, um, they might have young they're feeding, obviously, that wouldn't be this type of year, but there's various reasons they might be out here in the day, so just an animal being out here in daylight does not, does not constitute it, uh, being a sick or, or active strain. So, um, but, so that's, that's the major things we're looking for. Um, like I say, I'm, I'm around various counties that we're working in, picking up road kill, uh, we do more of that. This winter, um, I told our, told some of our coyotes, I said, "Look, here in Georgia, if you're not the one to get it, the time you get to it is probably not even good for sample." So, uh, you know, we can get so hot here, and, and of course, that brain tissue and, and spinal tissue and stuff breaks down pretty fast. Any more questions?
Sure, man.
Yes.
Doctor, do you use these baits available to the public generally?
Typically not. Um, I know, I do believe there's some, uh, there's some, maybe county governments up in the northeast, or maybe in, uh, may have done some stuff in Florida, but I know in the past, some of the, some of the counties or municipalities up in the northeast have done their own baiting, um, but it's usually on such a small scale, it's, you know, say for instance, you're in Catoosa County, you want to bait in Catoosa County, well, your covering Catoosa County, and you've got all this area around you, it's, um, you're, you're really, you're really not accomplished in a whole lot. So, um, you know, if you're on an island or something like that, it might be worthwhile, but, um, now, will Mariel sell them to somebody? I don't know. Uh, I know they will sell them to, to government entities, but I'm, I'm not really sure. We get that, we get calls on occasion, "Hey, I live down here in Atlanta, I know y'all are baiting, can I get some of the baits or buy some of the baits?" But, um, that poses problems within itself, so, um, you know, I typically, I tell individuals though, uh, I had a call from somewhere up around Savannah, up in the city of Savannah, but one, one of the municipalities over there, they contacted me about where they could get baits, and they were just looking at the possibilities, uh, I never heard back from them, of course, I gave them Mariel information and gave them our field coordinator's information, so she could talk to them, so, um, so they are available to people other than us, but I'm not sure where Mariel, if they draw the, where they draw the line as far as to this.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
It's, uh, yeah, I'll probably address that. We could, we could be done in ten minutes. I guess now we add the whole view, Mr. Lee, business, if you have any questions, comments. If you're not, if you're rolling chat, it's, I have, it's probably passed to one here in the center's office. We had no exit, so we have a motion to adjourn. I'll end the adjournment, say that. Thank you, we are adjourned.